Yes, very much. Did you read?
Oh, yeah. It is eight thirty a.m. this morning on the eighteenth of January twenty twenty-two, and we will call this meeting to order. What I would ask is that everyone please check your phones and make sure they're on silence so that we don't have cell phones going off in the middle of the meeting, if we could, please. And with that, we will move on to our chaplain prayer and pledges, and we have Ralph Dawkins, chaplain, pastor here to offer both.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke prayer into this beating and gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. You said that we should pray for those that are in authority over the city, so I pray and lift up the mayor and her staff, the assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person in department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. I pray that you would bless them today to work together in unity and tackle all the items that are on the agenda today. I pray that you would give them godly wisdom, direction, and instructions on how to lead, manage, and operate the city in all of its departments. And lastly, Lord, I pray for our chiefs, the fire chief, the chief of police, the sheriff's department, and all of those who protect and serve our country. I pray that you would give us all today economic prosperity. May you draw in and attract to this city businesses, corporations, that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to succeed and grow. In Jesus' name, amen. Let us turn. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
See, have to be that.
You know, I didn't move well. I was no, no.
We're robotic up here.
We didn't want to do it that way.
Maybe so.
We have one proclamation this morning, and it is a proclamation of January twenty twenty-two. A school board recognition month, so would all of our school board members that are in the audience, please come forward and join me as we read this proclamation. The mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to our society in an ever-changing world. Our San Angelo ISD board members are committed to the children of San Angelo and believe all children can be successful lifelong learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of each child to support each child's hopes and dreams. This distinguished group of servant leaders includes Board President Mr. Max Parker, Vice President Mr. Bill Dindel, Secretary Mr. Gerald Gallegos, Treasurer Dr. Taylor Kingman, Mrs. Amy Mizell Flint, Mr. Lanny Lehman, and Ms. Lupita Arroyo. SAISD board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. They are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system and dedicate numerous unpaid personal hours to support and lead our San Angelo schools. Our San Angelo ISD school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, declare our appreciation to the members of the San Angelo Independent School Board and proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-two as School Board Recognition Month in San Angelo, Texas, and urge all citizens to join us and San Angelo ISD in recognizing the dedication and hard work of the SAISD school board members and to partner with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children and produces future-ready graduates. I certainly, as mayor, want to thank each of you for what you've done. It's been a tough year, tough couple of years. We shouldn't limit it to one, should we? And your dedication to the students, the staff has been tremendous. So, thank you for what you have done. And may I have some comments from Max? Would you like to comment?
I'd be honored, Mayor. On behalf of San Angelo Independent School District, San Angelo's public school district, we're all proud to serve in this school district. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and all the city council for recognizing us every year and for also for being strong advocates for public education. We really appreciate you. I'd like to note, even though the mayor mentioned it, I'd like to mention the board members that are here, our Vice President Bill Dindel, our Treasurer Dr. Taylor Kingman, and then Lupita Arroyo, Amy Mizell Flint, Gerard Gallegos, our secretary is not here, Lenny Lehman called and was hoping to be here, and he wasn't able to make it. I'd like to also introduce our administrators that are here that make our job as board members easy and ask you guys to come up also, so when we do the photograph. Dr. Carl Detloff, our superintendent; Greg McIntyre, our deputy superintendent; Dr. George McFarland, who's our assistant superintendent and head of finance; Wes Underwood, one of our directors; Shelly Helston, one of our directors; and Becky, come up, she's our board secretary. Whitney and Molly, come on up. Molly are our Directors of Communication. And I can't do like Whitney and then say the names of everybody else in the audience, but I think this is everyone. Dr. Jenna Ritter is not here. She's our Assistant Superintendent in charge of curriculum, and Dr. Farah Gomez is going over all our numbers right now. She's our Charge of Human Resources, trying to see what teachers we have, what substitute teachers we have today. We all know that it's best for our children to be in school, to learn, but we've got to have teachers and to be able to keep our classrooms open. And many of our teachers are fighting the COVID virus right now, and we also have many substitute teachers that are having the same problem. So, we ask that you pray for our teachers and our students today. And with that, Mayor, I appreciate you again honoring us here today. I don't know if any other board team member would like to speak, but if so, come forward.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, at San Angelo ISD, we say our people make the difference, but that truly begins from very top up, from our Board of Trustees. You'll hear people say servant leadership, and that is truly what these folks do. I don't think that our general public and, you know, even me, prior to working with the school district, truly understood the amount of work and dedication and endless hours that these folks contribute and dedicate out of their own hearts to really helping our community, to helping our students. Their work helps our fourteen thousand students, our two thousand employees, and beyond that, our substitutes, really supporting and lifting them up and helping guide us to make the best decisions for our futures. You'll hear us say that we are working to support the hopes and dreams of our students, but it truly begins with this group. They do the research to really understand and make sure that we are navigating the complex situations that we're in, ever-evolving education, to make sure that we're on the right path. And you would never believe the amount of dedication and time and work to creating goals, to really reviewing and making sure that we are making the best decisions for our community and for our students. So, I really say that we request that y'all join us in thanking these wonderful group of peoples for their dedicated time and lift them up as well, because we cannot do it without them. So, thank you so much to our wonderful Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mayor. I have learned an important lesson, that if you follow Max Parker and Whitney Wood, your comments can be brief, because they do an incredible job of articulating our mission in SAISD. I do want to just recognize that if you cast your vision out across the state of Texas, so many school boards, elected boards are fractured right now. But in San Angelo, not only in our community, but in our school district, our boards are cohesive, unified, and are making the best possible decisions with the evidence before us for our city and for our students. So, I just want to commend our Board of Trustees for their steady hand. I've mentioned in the past that the average tenure of our board is approaching around ten years of service. Again, these are non-paid elected positions, and I just can't thank our Board of Trustees enough for providing that steady hand and reassurance. They've also initiated early literacy, early math initiatives so that we can attempt to close that achievement gap that is happening across our state and nation. So, thank you, Board of Trustees, for your service. Thank you, City Council, and other elected members. That's what keeps San Angelo strong. Thank you.
We will now move into the agenda of item of public comment. Let me remind everybody, if you choose to offer public comment, that you must state your name and address or SMD area. Each citizen can speak just once per item unless asked to comment by council. Public comment, you are limited to three minutes unless extended by council or translation services. A proponent or opponent, five minutes unless extended by council or translation services. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. I'm going to start the public comment section with some public comments, and it deals with cybersecurity. Many of you might have received an email that came out, a letter from me through the Chamber of Commerce, talking about the initiative to focus on cybersecurity, which is a grant that ASU has received, and we need tremendous participation from our citizens. So, let me start with these comments. "We live in a technology-driven age. With all the benefits that come with that, there are also some challenges that can be quite damaging and even dangerous to citizens. We generally know about the benefits, but what about that other side? Identity theft is probably the biggest problem I hear about the most. How many of you have unknowingly had credit cards opened in your name or woken up to unknown charges in your bank account? Maybe a $500 loan that you didn't apply for was approved, or maybe you suddenly owned a brand-new vehicle that you didn't purchase. There are far too many people out there who simply are not equipped to protect themselves against malicious attacks such as these." The City of San Angelo, Tom Green County, San Angelo ISD, Goodfell Air Force Base have joined forces with Angelo State University and the University of Texas at San Antonio to enhance cybersecurity in our community. UTSA's Center for Infrastructure Assurance and Security received a grant from the National Security Agency and will be working with multiple communities, beginning with ours, to improve cybersecurity awareness and education throughout our public school system, our local businesses, government, and our higher academic institutions. We will see the launch of a K through twelve cybersecurity program that will incorporate cybersecurity into the curriculum. In addition, the Collegiate Outreach Program will consist of initiatives such as national collegiate cyber defense competition teams, certification training, outreach to area high schools, and more. Under the same umbrella, we can expect an analysis of what our cybersecurity professionals here need, as well as the creation of a training initiative for nonprofits, and even a cybersecurity program that extends to the entire community. These are just some of the many advanced things that will be happening with the help of UTSA, NSA, and all our other community partners. The goal is for our city to be safe from the threats posed from the world of technology. The problem is that many don't know, many don't have the tools to protect themselves against those threats. We're going to change that. We want citizens from all generations here to be able to thrive in this technology-driven age. So, if you were one who received the email for a survey, we need you to, if you would, it's a small survey, it won't take a lot of time, but if you would please make sure that you take that survey to help us gain information that we need to better understand, the information that our citizens need, our businesses need, to ensure that we are cyber-secure in this city, as well as the fact that we are the choice city in the United States for execution of this program. So, we've been chosen, no other city in the United States has been chosen to start this program and execute a program. So, we need your support, and we appreciate that in advance. So, thank you. Other people, other comments, if you would, please come forward.
My name is Richard Barline, fourteen fifteen West Terrace. Y'all remember me from this past summer when I came before you, and there was complaint about the traffic going through Block one twenty-two in Angelo Heights from the liquor store. It was something that we were wanting to follow up on it. We went ahead and made the application. I talked to everybody on the block. They're on the residential side of the block, and we all agreed that this was something we wanted to do. And we went ahead and finally got down to the agreement, and we've got one holdout on the agreement. There's one person that won't sign. We tried for several months to get her to sign and couldn't get it to happen, just didn't happen. And after that period of time, I was talking to Brendan Dyson, and he said, "Richard, how about, the way that the residential block is laid out, there's two lots here on one side of the alley, and then on my side of the alley, I have the entire length of the residential side. So, there's three residences in there." And Brandon said, "Richard, why don't you see if we can't get the right-of-way encroachment and redo the agreement where it goes from the property line, from the one person on the other side of the alley that signed the agreement, over to yours, and we will just block off that part." And I told him, I said, "That was something that I was thinking about." And, "Yeah, let's go ahead and do it." And he said, "Well, I've got to talk to Shane Kelton." And he approached Shane Kelton about it, and Shane denied it. And I couldn't figure out why, but there's two things I want to tell you right now. One of them is nineteen thousand vehicles. And the other one is that as for the Texas Transportation Code, there is no procedure for a home room municipality when it comes to closing an alley. None. And so, anyway, to carry on, I kind of got out of line there, but anyway, Brandon Dyson also referred me to legal counsel. May I continue?
Take it one more minute and then wrap it up, please.
Okay. And so, I have talked to an attorney about this, and we both agreed that trying to engage the person that won't sign the agreement is not the appropriate thing to do, and that actually it is appropriate to close a partial part of an alley. It's done, it's done all over town. And I went over and talked to Shane, and he said, "Richard," he said, "There's potentially a liability problem with people pulling in, because the part that would be closed would be on the inside of the alley, or inside of the block. It wouldn't be the one that would be on the street side." He said, "There'd be a problem with people pulling in there and then having to back out." That happens all over town. That's controlled with do-not-enter signs, know-through traffic, several different signage that you can use to address that problem. And I told him, I said, "I don't see how there's a partially abandoned alley between Forty-third and Forty-fourth Street, right off of Travis in Lakeview." And I told him, I said, "This is the same thing here that we've got here with this right-of-way encroachment that happened up there. That woman up there wanted the property abandoned so she could take possession of the property. Here, I'd had, when Lane was here, I took videos in that six-day time period. There were three hundred and seventy-two vehicles that went down the alley. If you multiply that times fifty-two for a year, that's over nineteen thousand vehicles a year that's going down the alley. They're coming from the liquor store. It's not a flower shop. And it was out there, you can't believe the traffic, the trash, urination in the alley. I picked up three whiskey bottles and a beer bottle yesterday morning. And I don't think that the concern that Shane has about the liability is actually really that much of a problem. According to the Texas Transportation Code, the alley is not for through or circular traffic, and that's what comes in there, over nineteen thousand times a year.
Thank you very much for your comments, and we'll see what we can do to proceed and make something positive happen.
We have no quality of life, ma'am, and our property values are in the tank. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Do I have anyone else who would like to make public comment this morning? I know many of us have received comments on the backing up of traffic on Knickerbocker, and I don't think Shane's here today. I don't see him in the audience. Patrick, you want to come forward?
I will substitute.
And explain the situation, because I think, I'm not sure if everyone's heard multiple stories on the backing up of the traffic and their concern for tremendous potential accidents happening there.
Right. And as you said, we've received those comments and those phone calls as well. We've spoken with TechDOT. That is a TechDOT-controlled highway, so they would be the ones that would initially put out any type of traffic control. The unfortunate thing is, is there's not a standard to restrict traffic like that, other than a notification, but at that point, you're assisting a private business, which is not a standard that TechDOT usually does. So, we are in communication with them, trying to find a solution, talking to the business owners as well. You know, thankfully, it's a booming business, and they're doing very well, so we're happy about that. But we are aware of it. We are actively trying to find a solution, something that works within what we're able to do and is effective. So, just please, if anything else, just let the citizens know to be cautious coming down that right-side lane during that noon hour, during those peak hours. And I know that the business has put a sign out there, trying to help notify not blocking driveways and such, but we are working with TechDOT to try to find a, trying to find a solution for that problem.
Thank you. The other thing I'm receiving a lot of communication on is the subject of this laying down of fiber and the number of people who've been brought into town to do it. And there's a lot of concerns over public right-of-way. And Theresa, if you could explain public right-of-way, because some people say, "Well, the city only has true public right-of-way underground, but above ground, the citizens have the right to control their landscape, their irrigation, their whatever." Can you explain, better explain public right-of-way in someone's home?
Yes, we do have the right to access the public right-of-way for a public purpose, and it has been determined at the state level, as well as we would determine as well, the laying of this fiber would constitute a reason that you can go in the right-of-way to perform those services. While it's generally true that we allow people to do things in the right-of-way, it's always with the understanding, or should be with the understanding, that if there's a public need for that property, then that public need is going to supersede your right to have landscaping there. From what I understand, that we're still working with those companies, at least one of them, I'm not sure if the other ones, Patrick might have more information about that, that have come in, what it's like working.
Several different signage that you can use to address that problem. And I told him, I said, "I don't see how there's a partially abandoned alley between 43rd and 44th Street, right off of Travis in Lakeview." And I told him, I said, "This is the same thing here that we've got here with this right-of-way encroachment that happened up there. That woman up there wanted the property abandoned so she could take possession of the property." Here, I'd had, when Lane was here, I took videos in that six-day time period, there were 372 vehicles that went down the alley. If you multiply that times 52 for a year, that's over 19,000 vehicles a year that's going down the alley. They're coming from the liquor store. It's not a flower shop. And it was out there, you can't believe the traffic, the trash, urination in the alley. I picked up three whiskey bottles and a beer bottle yesterday morning. And I don't think that the concern that Shane has about it, about the liability is actually really that much of a problem. According to the Texas Transportation Code, the alley is not for through or circular traffic. And that's what comes in there, over 19,000 times a year.
Thank you very much for your comments and we'll see what we can do to proceed and make something positive happen.
We have, we have no quality of life, ma'am, and our property values are in the tank.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Do I have anyone else who would like to make public comment this morning? I know many of us have received comments on the backing up of traffic on Knickerbocker. And I don't think Shane's here today. I don't see him in the audience. Patrick, you want to come forward?
I will substitute.
And explain the situation because I think, I'm not sure if everyone's heard multiple stories on the backing up of the traffic and their concern for tremendous potential accidents happening there.
Right. And as you said, we've received those comments and those phone calls as well. We've spoken with TechDOT, that is a TechDOT-controlled highway. So they would be the ones that would initially put out any type of traffic control. The unfortunate thing is, is there's not a standard to restrict traffic like that, other than a notification. But at that point, you're assisting a private business, which is not a standard that TechDOT usually does. So we are in communication with them, trying to find a solution, talking to the business owners as well. You know, thankfully, it's a booming business and they're doing very well, so we're happy about that. But we are aware of it, we are actively trying to find a solution, something that works within what we're able to do and is effective. So just please, if anything else, just let the citizens know to be cautious coming down that right-side lane during that noon hour, during those peak hours. And I know that the business has put a sign out there, trying to help notify not blocking driveways and such. But we are working with TechDOT to try to find a, trying to find a solution for that problem.
Thank you. The other thing I'm receiving a lot of communication on is the subject of this laying down of fiber and the number of people who've been brought into town to do it. And there's a lot of concerns over public right-of-way. And Teresa, if you could explain public right-of-way? Because some people say, "Well, the city only has true public right-of-way underground, but above-ground, the citizens have the right to control their landscape, their irrigation, their whatever." Can you explain, better explain, public right-of-way in someone's home?
Yes, we do have the right to access the public right-of-way for a public purpose. And it has been determined at the state level, as well as we would determine as well, the laying of this fiber would constitute a reason that you can go in the right-of-way to perform those services. While it's generally true that we allow people to do things in the right-of-way, it's always with the understanding, or should be with the understanding, that if there's a public need for that property, then that public need is going to supersede your right to have landscaping there. From what I understand, that we're still working with those companies, at least one of them. I'm not sure if the other ones, Patrick might have more information about that, have, that have come in, what it's like working with those folks and trying to get that landscaping and things back. But we all know if you take out, you know, some big landscaping, it's not going to look the same for a long time. So we do have a right to access it. You can't access the underground without accessing the surface. So we, they are within their rights to access the surface to install that fiber.
I mean, I know of one family that in one day lost, hit, they hit the water line twice. I mean, how do you not?
Yeah, we are having that concern. Allison and I have spoken about that on a number of occasions, the amount of damage to our own facilities that's occurring through some of that as well.
And then same family lost their internet, their telephone service, and their water twice. I think that's pretty abusive. So I think we need to better understand what's going on. And I know there's been many water lines. I would assume those companies have GPS capabilities and should understand where the water lines are. What's happening is not okay. It is for the better good and I get that. But the better good is not handicapping the lives of people with loss of internet, phone service, and water twice.
Can you forward me the contact information for those folks? All right, thank you.
What other issues are out there that someone would like to make public comment on today? Seeing none, we will move on into our consent agenda. I will ask each city council member if there's an item that they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda. I'm going to start with pulling item G. Larry? Lucy?
Come in.
Harry?
Nothing.
Tom?
I'm good.
Tommy?
No ma'am.
Okay. Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item G?
So move.
So move by Harry, seconded by Lucy. Public comment, please. With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes 6-0. Item G is consider executing task order two and the amount of $1,583.880 for final design and project bidding phases for Lake Nazworthy wastewater system improvements to CDM Smith Incorporated. To be funded by the Lake Nazworthy Trust Fund, valid approved funds, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Here's my concerning question is, I thought we already approved all of the dollars for the final design of this project. I'm surprised to have it come back and say that there's, there's still a next step in final design. So that's number one question. Can you discuss that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mayor, Council, Andy Viselios, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. To address your question there, Mayor, the previous phase was a preliminary engineering, so it's more of a concept level and it involves some environmental studies, things like that. We work with the property owners, try to get some of their concerns. And then once we have the general concept level down, then we move into final design, where they actually design the pipeline with grades and do a lift station design. So the previous phase, which is, and I put in, in the council agenda, it's about 85% right now. We're still waiting to finish up some archaeological studies, things like that. Was more to make sure that we have the general alignment down. We've done the initial contacts with the property owners. And now, if you will, we're ready to really get down and dirty into the final design.
It would just seem it's like one more step. Why preliminary in design? I mean, how many steps does it take to design?
Yes, ma'am. This will be the final step before bidding and this task order includes both the final design and the bidding phase.
And the timeline on this is what?
If I remember right, it's 355 days. Of course, that is pending any, we'll say, property negotiations that may occur. But by task order two, I believe it's 355 days.
And how long was the previous preliminary design phase?
Sorry, ma'am, I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head. I think they were pretty close to being on schedule, but there's been some, there's been some items that have slowed us down. And that's part of the regular agenda as well, that I was going to discuss here in a few minutes.
And we'll leave some of those questions to that.
Yes, ma'am.
But since this is on the consent, I just, we needed to talk through some of it, so thank you. Does anyone else have a question? Then Andy, thank you for that information. And may I have a motion for approval?
So move.
So move by Harry, seconded by Tom. Any public comment, please? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. We will move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is consider resolution finding public necessity in authorizing eminent domain proceedings as necessary for acquisition of real property necessary for the installation and completion of pipelines. And that, I'm not sure I can pronounce that word, but appertinencies, whatever that is. Okay. Designed to expand, repair, and replace portion of the city's wastewater collection and transmission system. Enhance the city's ability to provide uninterrupted wastewater treatment collection and transmission services and protect environmental and public health, safety, and welfare. Andy, you're on again.
Thank you, ma'am. First, I do want to give a brief overview of the project, just as a refresher, as a reminder. So you can see on your screen there that that is an overall layout of what is planned for the Lake Nazworthy sewer improvement project. What you're seeing there is primarily in blue is the gravity lines. The red is the force main. It's approximately nine miles total of brand-new pipeline, ranging in diameter from eight-inch all the way up to, I believe, a 36-inch on the trunk main. And you can see the alignment. What is in purple there is city-owned properties. So we're trying to utilize city-owned properties as much as possible, but we will, of course, need to go through some private properties. This slide shows an updated map, just very, very minor changes to the alignment. And it also includes an aerial background. So we start on the, we'll say, the bottom left of this map, which is on South Concho Drive, with a new lift station pumping it across the lake. There'll be two force mains. And then it runs along Country Club, heads north along the old railroad right-of-way, crosses the Concho River, heads east near Butler Farms, continues along the river, and connects up at the top right there with, right along the Concho River next to Chadburn with an existing trunk main. So we're just basically tying it in, adding capacity to the Lake Nazworthy area, as well as picking up some unserved areas, as well as providing future capabilities to pick up some currently unserved areas. So what we're looking at today is a resolution for potential condemnation. The first part of it is, obviously, we're going through some private properties, so property acquisition will be necessary in the form of easements. We need it not just for construction, but also for operation and maintain, maintenance of these new lines. The second item is condemnation may be necessary if we can't reach an agreement with a specific property owner. Third item there is this resolution declares a public necessity for this project. It allows for formal negotiations and it allows us to initiate eminent domain proceedings for public use. Now, one important point of this resolution is it does not allow us to file condemnation suit without further council action. And I think that's very important for everybody here to understand, is that this just allows us to go through formal negotiations and initiate condemnation if we can't reach to a good agreement with the property owner. So I do want to highlight, there are a couple of areas, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but there are a couple of areas we've been having some struggles with some property owners. The line, or the area highlighted in green there is one area where we will be taking a new gravity main through there. And we've been working with this property owner, trying to negotiate an alignment that meets design criteria, as well as meets the property owner's specific needs. And then this specific location, the pipeline will be going through city-owned property, but it's leased to a property owner. And we need to be able to access the city-owned property through this property owner's property. And there's just been some timing challenges and communication challenges of us being able to get in there to complete the archaeological study, which is necessary to complete before we go into final design. And so with that, I would open it up to any questions.
My greatest concern is that with the timeframe that it's taken between preliminary and now final, and the timeframe is like three years. And the amount of growth and development continues to be negatively impacted. And obviously, the reason we're doing this is because it has hurt development of the lake area for a very long time, as well as other areas. So I understand the timeframe, we've got to do it right, et cetera, but there's a lot of need for this to happen. A lot of reasons for this to happen. And I'm running out of patience on the timeframe, I know that, so.
Yes, ma'am. And we do know the urgency involved in the project. We are working as fast as we can. There are certain stipulations and requirements involved in these type of projects. You know, between the TCQ regulations and between the funding requirements, that we just have to follow a certain process. And so we know from water utility standpoint, this is at the top of our priority. I've been actively engaged in this project, working with property owners. I've engaged Teresa many times on certain items. And so we are certainly keeping it, ma'am, to the top of the priority list.
I know how sometimes bureaucracy slows the natural process down and it seems as though this has been one of those, so.
And I will say, one of the biggest time challenges we've had is working with the property owners, trying to get access to the properties.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Tom?
Andy, we have two property spots, correct? If you go back on your maps and point it out. So what's the first property owner's issue? I mean, is that?
That specific property owner, again, I don't want to give too much information in a public setting. But there is little personal gain for that individual as part of this project. And the way it cuts through the property and their potential future plans they have on a property, we've tried to work numerous times, looking at different alignments of going in different directions. Some of the preferences of this property owner, we can't feasibly do as part of the design criteria necessary to design a gravity sewer line. So it's just, from a design standpoint, we can't meet the criteria that this person has for the very top priority that they have on the alignment.
How about the second one, as far as scheduling, or?
Yes, that, this was quite a few months ago and that was when we brought the archaeological company in and they were going through and doing all the test digs that they had to do. And on that, on that property, she was going to be out of town, I believe, for like two weeks and wouldn't allow us to cut through her property with her not being there. Now, the archaeological firm does have to come back a second time to handle both of those properties. And there was a miscommunication on a property that they had access to, but didn't think they did at that time. And so when they come back, they're going to do all three of them at one time. That third property owner, there's absolutely no issues. That gentleman has been very, very good to work with.
Were there any other council members who wanted to add any conversation or question to this?
I think we see why we need this based on Andy's presentation here. So I'd move approval, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Tommy.
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Public comment, please? Having none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. With none opposed, motion passes 6-0. As I said, Andy, get it done. Item B, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z21-16, a request for approval of a rezoning from the single-family residential zoning district to the general commercial zoning district located at 2115 and 2117 Gunner Street. I thought that was on last, oh no, sorry, go ahead. John, you're on.
Just got tripped up by the name, Mayor.
Well, you know what I got tricked up on was when we were reviewing it earlier this week, I'm thinking, well, didn't we do that last council meeting? No, it was just preliminary, thank you. Yes, sir. And I have no involvement or interest or association with Gunner Street anymore. The Gunner family did develop that decades and decades ago, but I'm not part of it, so no conflict here.
I kind of wish sometimes you would have some involvement, as many complaints as I get about that street.
Long time ago, got rid of that.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. I think we have a presentation. But as you mentioned, this is a rezoning Gunter Street. It's basically at the corner of Bryant and Avenue Q, or right there where Knickerbocker comes in. If you know where the HTO new business is there, it's the two properties just to the south of that. And those are currently zoned residential and they would be going to commercial zoning for additional commercial development in that area. I don't believe we had any responses in opposition to this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for John, Lucy?
Sean, you mean the people that live right there next to this HTO did not complain that they're going to have another business on the other side of them?
Well, I'm sure they have some concerns about HTO itself. Again, I don't believe at the time, we have received anything from, from those neighbors about something new going in.
We know what it's going to be?
I might defer to the applicant. And my understanding is it's like a car dealership, you know, used car, small, I mean, it's a very small property, but car sales. But again, remember, you're, when you approve a rezoning, you're approving anything that's allowed in that zoning district. But that's my understanding. But if the applicant's here, they could probably address that better.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'd like to make sure I point something out.
Yes.
You didn't mention the future land use for that property. It is commercial, is that correct?
That's correct. The long-range plan already has that designated commercial, that's correct.
And we have already brought up with the TechDOT, people are concerned about the traffic at Avenue Q and Bryant Boulevard. They do have it in their plans, Daniel, I think they said 2024 or 25, 2024. So their TechDOT will be looking at some issues there at that intersection, just FYI.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, Lucy, second, please. Second by Larry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. With none opposed, motion passes 6-0. We'll move into item C, first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending September 30, 2022 for projects. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a budget amendment here for you this morning. The first one is for the Development Corporation pulling $3 million from their fund balance to fund the Skyline Project, which was recently approved by city council. And the second is for audit fees to Avenue Insight, which is for the hotel occupancy tax audit that was also approved by council. That audit is intended to pay for itself through education of hoteliers and finding audit adjustments that may be available and due to the city. The amount for that one is $53,500.
Is that a required audit?
It is not required. And the purpose is to go back four years and for these auditors to come in and look at the hoteliers. They select on a sample basis. They look at them, they educate them where they may be doing things wrong and they find any adjustments where they may have underpaid to the city or possibly overpaid, but usually it would be underpaid. This was approved by city council so that we can clean up. We usually do it about every four years because that's the statute of limitations that we can go back. And so that way, we're kind of getting the best bang for our buck by doing it only every four years, since we can go back that far.
Does that audit include looking at STRs and B&amp;Bs?
Yes, ma'am. The original item that we brought to city council, we were proposing $40,000 for the audit. The additional $13,500 was so that we can fully sample STRs, as you requested at that meeting. So that will allow us to look at those a little more in-depth and I think that's a good opportunity for us to see what's out there as well, so. And of course, once the audit's complete, we will be bringing back the results for council's review.
All right. Questions for Tina? With none, may I have a motion for approval of these?
So move.
So move by Harry, seconded by Tommy. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Tina. We'll move into the last item D, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter 8, offenses and nuances, Article 8.02, air guns, firearms, and weapons of the San Angel Code of ordinances to regulate the firing of archery devices within the City of San Angel and to bring the article into compliance with Texas statutes. Tracy Fenshler, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Council. Tracy Fenshler, Assistant Chief of Police.
You had a busy weekend.
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Your police officer performed heroically, and did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Goodness gracious. As you said, we have a second reading on an ordinance to bring everybody up to speed. Late last year, we had an incident where an archery enthusiast had a misfire, impelled an arrow into his neighbor's roof. Officers responded, and we realized after a review that we really didn't have anything to address that, so we reviewed it at his request and proposed a ordinance banning bows and arrows in the city limits. That was presented last council at y'all's direction. We had a meeting with some stakeholders, some archery enthusiasts, and we have a modification to that ordinance that would be banning them in the city limits, with the exception of on your personal property and imposing a offense if your arrow leaves your property.
I think that there, there was at least one good meeting, and a lot of people participated in it, either in person and/or on the phone or video conferencing, and I believe that we got a lot of great insight from citizen input and understand that the original ordinance was pretty heavy-handed and probably not well-intentioned as it relates to truly the world of archery. So, we appreciate all of the citizens' input, we appreciate everyone who stayed involved in this, so that we make sure that we don't have something on the books that really is too heavy-handed and too restrictive, and I think we've come to an agreement on what that ordinance should be and should read. Do I have questions from council on this item? Tom?
No, I think the group here, they had a good conversation with Tracy, and I think it's gone around, so with what's been proposed and go, I, you know, suggest we move to approve as presented.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Harry. Any public comment? If you have some, please come forward at this point. With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. And thank you again for all the input and effort everyone put in to getting this thing to a level that is reasonable. It's greatly appreciated. We will, closed session is next on the agenda, which there are no items on the agenda for closed sessions, so we will move into the follow-up and administrative issues, starting with, obviously, A, there was no executive session, so item B, consider approving various board nominations. Airport Advisory Board, Larry Martin, SMD four, to a first term ending October 2023. Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Caitlin Wiley, SMD one, and Jen Murphy, SMD two, to a second term, both ending January 2024. Civil Service Commission, Royal Lopez, to a 10th term ending January 2024. I'm surprised we have 10 terms.
The Civil Service Commission is not governed by our Code of Ordinances, and therefore there are no limits, so, yes, it is an extensive length of service, but there's no limitation.
Okay. Fort Concho Museum Board, Lisa Marley, SMD two, to a first full term. Shirley Spears, SMD four. David Shaylor, SMD six. Kathy Keen, SMD six, to a third term, all ending January 2024. Planning Commission, Brittany Davis, the mayor, to a first full term. Luke Urick, SMD one, and Joe Self, SMD two, to a second term, all ending January 2024. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, Gary Cortez, the mayor, to a second term. Paul Keaton, SMD one, to a first term. Bill Feist, SMD three. And Don Barnhart, SMD six, to a first full term, all ending January 2024. May I have an approval or questions or concerns on item B and the names and?
Move approval, Mayor.
Thank you, Tommy. Second by Lucy. Any public comment concerning those board appointments? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Consider appointing a chair of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board. I'm going to ask that we continue to have Jim Cummings as the Chair of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board as chair.
So, move.
So, move by Tommy.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Item D, discussion of scheduling a special meeting February 9, 2022, to canvass the results of the January 29, 2022 special election to fill Single Member District Five for an unexpired term ending May 2023. Julia, you want to make comment on this?
Yes, ma'am. So, the election takes place Saturday, January 29, of course, and voting hours 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., just a little plug for that. It is a special election for SMD Five, so with the state law, we are required to canvass within 11 days, so that puts us at February 9, which is a Wednesday. State law also allows that only two members of the sitting council have to come to canvass, so we could select a day on the 9th and a time, and just have two members of the existing council come and canvass the results. I didn't know if, if we go to a runoff, we do have to call that within five business days of the canvassing, or sorry, five days within the canvassing, so that would be a Monday, February 14 meeting instead of the 15th, if we go to a runoff. So, we could decide to have a full council for the canvassing if it looks like it's going to be a runoff, and we could just make a game time decision whenever we get the results from the 29th, and either have a full council come and canvass and schedule the runoff, or we could move the council meeting date to February 14 if needed.
Okay, so, number one, early voting has started, has it ended?
No, it goes through the 25th.
So, early voting continues through the 25th. Final vote is on the 29th, and do I have two council members who would, do we need to designate the two council members today?
No.
No, just, we pick a date?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, and you can't do it on February the 1st, which would be our normal date?
No, that's too soon.
Okay.
We have to allow time for all of the absentee ballots to be processed and counted.
Sure. Okay, with that, I guess at this point, does everyone have accept the February 9 as a canvassing date? All right, and we'll, so, we'll use that as the date, and we'll come up with the two people later on.
Do you want to do that now?
We can.
I can be here.
Okay, so Harry and Tommy, it's done. They raised their hand.
Good volunteers.
We're professionals. We did the last.
They go this way.
Yeah. Wanted to make sure he wasn't on that list.
Get that one down there, Julia. All right, we're done.
I don't know, we might want the mayor pro temp there to read, but.
Yeah. Yeah, do your part, Tom.
I did, I did. I pointed.
Okay. All right, that concludes that item, so we'll move on to item E, announcements of consideration of future agenda items. Are there any? With none, I needed adjournment. Motion, please.
So, move.
So, move by Tommy. Second by Tom. Any public comment on adjournment? With none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. We are adjourned at 9:25 a.m.
Good job, Mayor.